Thank you. I think I'm gonna, I'll give it a start. A little time before we get to the roll call. And before we.
Thank you, Mayor Story.
You're very welcome. Are we ready for the roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
And then?
Councilmember Brooks.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson. Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Here.
And Mayor Story.
Here.
Thank you.
And now, let's go to the flag of allegiance and I was gonna ask if Councilmember Brooks would leave us in the flag of allegiance?
My pleasure. I have the flag right behind me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for doing that. Next, I'm going to go a little bit out of order and next go to item number four, which is additions and relations to the agenda. The staff items, additions or relations.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Story. This evening unfortunately we need to cancel or reschedule the introduction of our new employee. Turns out that he had a conflict this evening and won't be able to attend.
Okay, well, um. Since it's a presentation, I don't, do we need a motion to delete this from the agenda?
No.
Okay. So then that brings us to presentations and we'll have an update now on the newly adopted state and county new district map.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Story and Council. Give you one moment to get set up here. Thank you for delaying slightly at the beginning of the meeting. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, moderator Larry, is everything looking okay?
Yes, it looks great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Story. Thank you, Council, for your patience as I got set up. This will be a brief presentation, as the mayor said, on the new maps that were adopted locally in November and statewide at the end of the year, at the end of December. So. An overview on redistricting, as you may know, this takes place every 10 years after the census is done and there's new data. The intent is that all districts locally and statewide have the same amount of people in them. And the federal government has, you know, many rules, one of which they shouldn't be discriminatory based on race or ethnicity. And in California, we also benefit from the Fair Vote Act, which has even more rules and stipulations. And one of them being that there should be attention paid to maintaining communities of interest within the same district. An example locally of a community of interest might be the Santa Cruz Mountain Rural Communities. So, moving through, there are four different district types that we'll touch on tonight and how and if Capitola's representation is changing based on the new maps. So, there's the supervisory district, very proud that I pronounced that correctly here, the state senate district, state assembly, and then our congressional districts statewide. So, very locally, our supervisory districts, while they did slightly change, our representation for the city does not. State senate district, again, our representation doesn't change here in the city. However, for state assembly and congressional districts, there are a few changes that we'll go over this evening. So, moving to our state assembly districts, there was actually quite, quite a big change, I would say. You may remember in November, Council met to direct the mayor to sign a letter actually kind of opposing what did end up going through and being approved in the proposed maps. That basically, the big picture of the change is Santa Cruz County as a whole is split between three districts moving forward rather than two, which is how it's set up currently. So, we're going to have the three new districts, 28, 29, and 30, that our county sits within. Capitola will be in the new assembly district 30. Currently, most of our county, including the city of Capitola, is in District 29, under Mark Stone's representation, with Watsonville and the rest of the county under Robert Rivas in District 30. So, moving forward, there will be new assembly district 28, 29, and 30, which Capitola is in. And the incumbent representative for the new district 30 is Jordan Cunningham, who currently represents District 35. So that is quite a change, and I am going to show you what I'm talking about. Here are some images. We have the big map here. I think you can see my mouse. You can see this is 30, which we're a part of. So it goes quite, quite down south. And then in the blow up here, you'll see what I mean when I say we're split across the three. If you can envision kind of like the county here within those three. So District 30, again, Capitola right here, the rest of the county, and then North County, where I live, the valley up here in District 28. So that is the new state assembly map. And this is just District 30 here. Again, kind of an odd elongated shape. For Congress, a very big picture change is that the state of California will move forward only having 52 seats in the House of Representatives and only 52 congressional districts, which we, for the past 10 years, we've had 53. So that is a change. More locally, our county will continue to be split between two. However, it'll be the new districts of 18 and 19. So that is a change. They look quite different, which again, I'll show you momentarily. Currently, most of our county, including the city of Capitola, is under Panetta's representation in District 20. And the rest, including like the whole city of Scotts Valley and more northern county, again, with on issue in District 18. But that is shifting. The new District 18 will be some of Santa Cruz County more inland. And Capitola and the rest of our county will be in new congressional District 19. And it's kind of an odd, like very L-shaped along the coast, all the way down to San Luis Obispo. So entire city of Santa Cruz, Scotts Valley, much of Watsonville, all of Capitola will be in District 19. And the incumbent for that district will be Jimmy Panetta. So here, I will show you the new map. As you can see, like I said, much of North County here, or excuse me, all of North County, all the way down the coast and then inland, kind of a sharp turn inland. And here's a nice picture. You can see all of the mountain communities here bordering with Scadows, Scotts Valley. Here we are, Capitola, some of Coralitis, all the way down bordering District 18, that new 18. And if you're interested, on issue will be in District 16, no longer representing any of Santa Cruz County. So that is quite a change, just kind of more big picture. So that is the new congressional map. Again, here is just District, the new District 19. And he takeaways, I would say, just a reminder, you know, these maps will take effect soon, but not until the upcoming election. So we have the primary in June, and then of course, our general election, November 8th. And as I mentioned, on a local level, not much has changed, certainly not for Capitola with our Board of Supervisors for our county. And at the state senate level, that really remains quite status quo for us here. But the change to our district lines and potentially for representation will come with the election for state assembly members and Congress. That is the conclusion of the presentation. Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Do councilmembers have questions? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to once again, and Chloe, I realize that we didn't get an opportunity to do your announcement leading into the council meeting.
Oh, thank you. I'd be happy to. So, as the mayor referenced, this meeting is not physically open to the public in accordance with California Senate Bill 361. We are, as you can see, meeting via Zoom, and there are several ways for the public to watch and participate. Information on how to join the meeting using Zoom or a landline mobile phone, along with how to submit public comment during the meeting tonight, is available on our website, cityofcapitola.org, and on the published meeting agenda. The public can also livestream the meeting on our website or on YouTube. As always, the meeting is cablecast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. And on Saturday, following the first rebroadcast at 1:00 p.m. on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. And our technician this evening is Melissa. Thank you so much, Melissa. Thank you, Mayor Story.
Yeah, thank you, Chloe, and yeah, thank you, Melissa. And I, I wanted to give the attendees a heads up if they wish to participate in public comment using email, which is publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. You may want to draw in some stuff for them, you know, emails now, so that they can be ready to submit when we get to that item. Pretty, pretty good what they have. So with that, that brings us to item three, additional material. Do we have additional material for the meeting to conclude?
Yes, Mayor Story. Council did receive one additional material. It was a public comment email regarding item 8B, that is the lifeguarding update item. Thank you.
Thank you. And we've already done item four, which will bring us now to oral communication for members of the public. This is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on items that are either on the consent agenda or not on tonight's agenda. And you may do that. You'll have, you'll raise your hand in Zoom. The moderator will let you in and you will have three minutes to speak. You can also phone in, and I believe that we have up on the screen now the directions on how to participate, as well as the email address. So Larry, do we have anyone that's wishing to speak in public comment?
Mayor Story, I do see one person so far. It is Serge.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Okay. My name's Serge Cagno. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am on the county's Mental Health Advisory Board. I'm the secretary. And I tried to send for public comment, sent you a flyer of our upcoming meeting. It's, we have a presentation by one of the co-chairs of a nationally recognized report called Roadmaps of the Ideal Crisis Response System. It's a pretty long report. It's about 200 pages. It's about assessing the behavioral health crisis system in a county with all of the different jurisdictions, municipalities, police departments, nonprofits, community, getting together to do an assessment and look, finding the gaps in the system. And then after finding the gaps, which are easier to agree on than the solutions, then going from there. I've reached out to different city councils and their different representatives. I think somebody from your police department just confirmed today that they would be able to come. So there should be a flyer. You can Google the Mental Health Advisory Board for Santa Cruz and find our next meeting. But it's February 17th, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., and the presentation will start around 3:30 or 4:00. We're hoping that this is just gonna be, as you know, like a Brown Act, a presentation kind of meeting with some input, but that we'll be able to find the players who want to continue on with meetings and we can create a work group and decide our format at a meeting after that. So if you're available or if you can send a representative, we would very much appreciate it and we would welcome you to our meeting at the Mental Health Advisory Board. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Serge, for that announcement. If, if I may ask, will this presentation be available over Zoom?
It'll be a Teams meeting, and the flyer has the short link for it. The agenda will come out a couple days before.
So people can find the link on the flyer.
Yeah, yeah. And there's also a call-in, if that's the way that people want to do it. And it'll be recorded if people miss it and they still want to be involved.
Right, okay. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a great night.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak and give their public comment?
Mayor Story, I do not see any attendees with their hands raised on this item, and we haven't received any emails.
Okay, with that, I think we'll move on to item six then, which is, I'll start with staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor Story. I think we have two comments for you this evening. We'll have Nikki kick it off first with an update from Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor Councilmembers. So the Recreation Division is going to experience a brief pause in our ability to register individuals online as we are starting up with a new registration system that is in the process of implementation. And it will, we expect it to be online by the beginning of March, and it will definitely be up and running in time for summer registration. But right now, if any individuals are looking to register for an activity that is occurring in March, we ask for payment and registration, old school registration, paper form, with cash or check payment. Or they could also just wait until March. Most of our activities are currently operating, and the things that begin in March, we should have our system up and running for it at that point. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that announcement, Nikki. Any other staff comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Story. Just a quick update, similar to Nikki. You may have noticed at the beginning of the year, our agendas and agenda packets look a little bit different. That's because staff has been working very hard to move over to a new agenda management system. And I have to say, overall, we're very pleased. It's been going really well. You may also have noticed that the website interface is slightly different regarding how to access meetings, agendas, packets, and videos from the main webpage. So everything is there, the route is slightly different, and we're still kind of working out pinks to make sure the public, they have access as it is, but just that it's as easy and as clean as it can be. So if anyone on council is asked, that's the situation, and if anyone has any suggestions or questions, please always feel free to call me, email me, let me know what could be improved, and we will make that change. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for that announcement. Any councilmembers have any suggestions about the agenda? Yeah, please let Chloe know. Which will now bring us to item seven, which, oh, excuse me. This is an opportunity there. I wanted to see if councilmembers had any comments, and I see that Councilmember Peterson has their hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Story. I just wanted to briefly remind everyone that Capitola is having the Capitola Leadership Academy coming up in March and April. The deadline to apply is February 25th, and there's more information on the city website. And it's a great opportunity to encourage civic participation and help residents better understand how the city works and the city's role in the larger community. So I encourage anyone who's interested to check that out on our website. It's a really great program. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is today was the first meeting of the CalCity Transportation Communications and Public Works Policy Committee, long name. And this is my first year on that committee. I spent three years on the Community Services Committee and then transferred over to this one. And I just wanted to share a little bit about what the work plan item that we spoke about today. This committee in particular is going to be focusing on obtaining funding for sustaining and improving critical infrastructure, and that includes streets, highways, bridges, transit, but then also broadband and other economic development items, bridging the digital divide, improving the water grid, and focusing on efficient and cost-effective project delivery. So no small task, lots of really exciting and important stuff. I believe we're going to be meeting four more times throughout the year as we work to advocate on behalf of our city and all cities throughout the state of California to obtain funding through state government sources. So stay tuned for more on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, I want to echo what Kristen said about the leadership opportunity to learn more and understand more about our awesome town. And Kristen, kudos for being on yet another board. I honestly don't know how you do it. But also, I just wanted to do a little shout out for our central fire and our first responders, Capitola PD, and everything for our little brush fire that we had recently right near the trestle and near our museum, which I know was probably a scare for most people in city halls, obviously. But thank you, everybody, for just putting forth your best work and communication. It, it means a lot, and I know that it makes us all feel really protected living here, and that's a huge quality of life for me personally. So I can only imagine, it is for most people, but thanks to our city and hopefully we can keep, keep up the good work on that front. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other councilmembers have comments? Seeing none, I wanted to report out that Mayor Select Committee met on January 22nd, just this past. And, and part of the actions that they took were to, one, confirm Capitola as being a regular sitting member of last, last coast, with Scotts Valley being the alternate. We did affirm Councilmember Brooks as our, as the regular representative from Capitola to continue in that role at last coast. And Donna Lynn was appointed as the alternate from Scotts Valley. We as well appointed Jack Dillis to the Monterey Bay Area Resources District, as well as the Consolidated Redevelopment Overside Doors. And those were the actions that we took through the, at the Mayor's Select Committee. Oh, the, the last coast terms start on May 22nd of this year and will run to May 4th of 2026. I also wanted to report last Tuesday night, the Arts Commission met. And they did a report out that they have confirmed the schedule of 12 fans for the Twilight Concert Series to start on June 15th, you know, this summer. So we look forward to having the Winky Night Concerts back in, in full form. So that will conclude my updates for the council, which will now bring us to the consent items. And I wanted to see if any of the councilmembers wants to pull a consent item for further discussion. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent item.
You can make a motion to approve the consent item.
Is there a second? Yeah. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Kaiser and a second by Councilmember Peterson. And so Chloe, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Aye.
Mayor Story.
Aye. This will bring us to item eight, which is general government for this evening. And the first item is Phase A, which is the presentation on Highway 1 up Thoroughly, this lane and bus shoulder project between Bay Avenue 4th Street and State Park Drive. We'll have a presentation from the RTC and they're, I think, looking to provide input on certain aesthetic elements of that project. So can I ask first staff to call?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you, as you mentioned, is a presentation on the Highway 1 project that's going to stretch from the Bay Porter Avenue interchange down to State Park Drive. It includes adding off lanes in the area, and it also includes a bus, bus on shoulder aspect. The project has gone through preliminary design and environmental review, and that is all approved already. And the preponderance of the project, which is the Regional Transportation Commission, Caltrans, the county, and Capitola's been involved, commenting on the project that's gone through on some aesthetic features of the project, and they're looking for input with that. So I'd like to introduce Sarah Christensen from the Regional Transportation Commission and Kira Caselli from Mark Thompson Associates, who's a lead consultant on the project. I think Sarah's gonna kick off the presentation and go from there. Sarah?
Great, thank you, Steve. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Kristen Sin. I'm with the Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission. I manage the Highway 1 project for the RTC, and like Steve said, we have Kira Caselli here. She's our professional engineering consultant with Mark Thomas. Next slide, please. Kira, thank you. Here we go. Okay, so we have three projects under development. I just want to give kind of a high-level update on these three projects. So the first one is between SoCal and 41st, and that project is complete with the design and will be advertised any day now. And construction is expected to begin this year. The project that we are talking about today is the One in the Middle, the Phase 2 project. And this project is, in the final design phase, we are planning to finish design this year and go to construction next year. And then finally, the last segment on auxiliary lanes and bus on shoulder is the Phase 3 project that will bring it all the way to Freedom Boulevard. Next slide. All right, so here's the project we're here to talk about today. We have auxiliary lanes in both directions between the Bay Porter and Park interchanges, as well as Park to State Park Drive. There are two bridges proposed as part of this project. One is the replacement of the Capitola Avenue over crossing, and the second is the new pedestrian and bicycle over crossing at Marvis to drive. The schedule here, we finished the environmental phase in 2020. We're currently finishing up the final design and right-of-way phases and planning to begin construction in 2023, next year. construction in 2023, next year. Here's just kind of an overview of the additional auxiliary lanes that are proposed as one of the main components of the project. So there will be widening on both sides of the highway, as well as in the median. This project is going to provide significant benefits to traffic operations on the freeway. And also, a main part of it is obviously the replacement of the Capitola Avenue over crossing. And I just want to say thank you to the city of Capitola and to have staff involved with the project development team. It's been really helpful to have such a great partnership through the development of these projects. And I'm going to hand it over to Kira to talk about the aesthetic opportunities for the projects that we're looking at.
Great, thank you, Sarah, and thank you, Mayor Story and council members. So I'm just going to highlight some of the aesthetic features, as Sarah mentioned. There has been studies done or input that's been received for the corridor-wide aesthetics, so I'm going to start with that. In order to provide consistency along the highway corridor, we're proposing similar features through this segment of the project. So starting with some of the hard state features, we're proposing the staining of the median concrete barrier, aesthetic treatments on the sound walls that are proposed, similar to aesthetics that are on the existing corridor, as well as the staining and stamping of the core treatments at the entrances of the freeway, the entrances and exits of the freeway. There's also going to be proposed staining at the Midwest guardrail system along the corridor. In addition to some of the hard state features, there's also landscapes and components of the project. And so we're proposing native species to replace some of the vegetation that's being removed as part of the project, that will include both trees and shrubs, as well as vines at the sound wall locations. And again, these elements are in order to retain consistency on the Highway One corridor. So now we just want to highlight that we are looking for community feedback, feedback as mentioned. And I did want to note that there is currently a video and a survey on the Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission website. And at the end of this presentation, I'll show a QR code that will link you directly to the website, as well as the survey. So starting at the Capitola Avenue over crossing, as Sarah mentioned, the bridge will be replaced. And so some of the features that we're looking for, we're looking for feedback on five different features. The first one being the font on the bridge, and there's two options that we have narrowed down to, Franklin Gothic Demi and Angela Love Stan. And as you can see, that's proposed at the center of the bridge, of the new bridge. The next feature that we're looking for community feedback on is a metal-plated cutout as a community identifying image. We have, starting at the top, an option for a sea creature or a sea star. The middle option shown is a palm tree. And then there's also the option to just not, you know, propose any tub no fence decoration. The third feature that we're looking for community feedback on is there are retaining walls proposed on the northbound and southbound sections of the freeway near Capitola Avenue, and those extend both north and south. And so looking for feedback on the coloring, either a tan Newport sandstone or Santa Cruz limestone, like a gray. The next feature is the possibility of proposing art feature at the bridge entrance. The orange arrow is identifying approximately where that would be located, and then there's also a few different options that are what the, the bridge entrance column could potentially look like. So that concludes the five aesthetic features that we're looking for feedback on at Capitola Avenue. We are also, oh, sorry, no, there's one more feature. So the fifth feature that we're looking for feedback on is either whether or not to have the inside of the bridge painted, and that would be as part of the pedestrian experience, a blue wave or to not have that. That concludes the aesthetic features for the Capitola Avenue over crossing. The project is also, as Sarah mentioned, the proposing a pedestrian and bicycle overcrossing at Marvis. And back in fall of 2002, 2020, not 2002, that was a long time ago, the project team presented three contests in 2020 and received community feedback on those aesthetic features. And based on community feedback, the misty redwood aesthetic was selected. So today, we're looking for feedback on the bridge name font. The three options are Chormini, Extra Bold Alt, Suburbanic Bold Italic, and Forte. And this concludes the aesthetic feature presentation. Again, here's the QR code that I promised we would provide at the end of the presentation. And so if you want to use your phone to connect to it, or as I mentioned, you can visit the project website on the Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission website. And I'll leave this slide up, but that does conclude our presentation. If there are any questions or discussions.
First, Sarah, I'd just like to add really quickly, if I can, that there is a flyer in the agenda packet that also has this QR code, and we will be pushing that out on social media through the city in the next couple of days also to get people access to the project survey. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Kira, thank you, Sarah, thank you, Steve. And I'm glad we found another feature because I thought I miscounted. So I guess I wanted to ask if council members have questions about the presentation at this time? Seeing none, no hands up. I wanted to ask, and just out of curiosity, I noticed that the font options for AFCO were three, and for Capitola, only two, and they seem to be different fonts. And I'm just wondering if there were more fonts available than the options for Capitola?
We only proposed two because we actually struggled with this as a, as a project development team. One of those fonts was really inspired by the, I guess, the Capitola sign with the big And that was really the theme that we were, I guess, inspired by. We've also received some comments about consistency of the font. We've actually received quite a few email comments, not specifically from, you know, city Capitola folks, but just in general, I think there's some desire for consistency. But if you'd like to see another font, feel free to, yeah, there we go, that's the inspiration. But if you want to see another font, you can feel free to give that input to Steve and pass it on to the PDP.
We can show that.
Yeah, it comes from Mayor, I think it has some weight, so.
So Councilmember Bertrand, you had a question? You're, you're on mute, council member?
So, thank you very much, Mayor. So our city symbol is the begonia, and you were asking for art suggestions. I was wondering if that could be put out there also. However, I like the idea of stars, like something relating to our beach, and, you know, I don't know what the public would think in general, but, you know, traditionally, we've been identified by the begonia. Another thing is, at the start of the bridge, like at Capitola Avenue, you mentioned there was a possibility of some artwork there? Yeah, so we have an art commission with shamans on. Maybe we could, you know, work with them to try to come up with something. Typically, we'd do a contest, and maybe we could do something that is inspired by the children in our schools, as a contest.
Absolutely, yeah, I have that idea.
Yeah, because New Bryant Middle School is definitely in Capitola, and, you know, they've, over the years, produced a lot of artwork, one of which my daughter's participated in. So they all look nice, and a good thing about it is the kids all remember it, and once they grow older, they bring their kids by and show it to them. That's a good suggestion, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand. Are there any other council members that have questions on the presentation? Seeing none, I'm going to take this out to the public, and if the public enough to ease the way in on the progress and the designing elements. So, yeah, on your screen, you should see ways to participate. And Larry, it looks like we have one hand up now.
Yes, Mayor, sorry, we have a hand up. It is Samantha, group speaking, Lee.
Okay, go ahead, Samantha.
I believe she's still muted, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Samantha, if you can hear me, you're on mute right now?
I'm sorry, we'd like to actually retract that, we're a little busy, sorry about that.
Oh, good, no problem. That's fine. Larry, is there anyone else that has their hands up or has called in or submitted an email?
I don't see any attendees with their hands up, and we have not received any emails on this side.
Okay, I'll bring it back then to the council. Councilmember Bertrand, did you still have your hand up, or, okay, left over. And I'll, it looks like I saw Councilmember Peterson. Do you want to start us off?
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Sarah and Kira, for that presentation. I'm really excited for this project. I just want to throw my two cents in. I love the idea of the sea stars on the overpass as art. I think it really fits in with some of the other ocean-themed art that we have in Capitola. We have the fence around the top lot at the library that was meant to look kind of like wreath. There's a walkway on Capitola Avenue, this native metal that looks like kelp. We have the sea lions in the village that are bronze, so I think it would really kind of tie together nicely with what we already have. And then along with that, having that wave changing on the pedestrian, again, kind of ties into that overall sea life, ocean theme that I really appreciate, along with the art features. And then my thought on the limestone, I like the Santa Cruz limestone because it's gray, and if we're going to have the metal and the concrete, and it kind of all is cohesive, rather than having kind of a clay color just kind of thrown in there with all the other silver and gray. So I'm just throwing my two cents in there. I like the Angela Love Stan font, and I'm really excited to see this project together, thank you, or come together. Thank you so much for all of your work on this, really appreciate it.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, present.
Thank you, Mayor. I definitely want to echo what Councilwoman Peterson said about the Santa Cruz limestone and the wave part on the overpass. I also like the star shapes as well. I definitely, if possible, would love to incorporate some local art, whether it's students or just somebody that either applies, or something, I know the Art Simple Federation has done a lot of things like that in the past, where they sort of go through different applicants. I think that would be awesome. And I, I did like, as I said, the star is the best, but I kind of liked the all caps for the word Capitola. I don't know if that really matters or not, but just kind of decided we need to do that with the stars. But again, just, that's my two cents. But I'm also very excited about this, and thank you guys for all your hard work, much appreciated.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other council members have their hands up? Well, this is just the presentation, and I wanted to thank Sarah and Kira for showing us the, you know, the aesthetics of the project, and I think it's, and the vegetation, I think it's wonderful to add those elements into the highway. I know whenever I go underneath the Bay, at Bay Porter, there are those archaeological kids, and, you know, I've always been drawn to them, and I thought that was a really wonderful element. Certainly appreciate doing the public outreach and doing the survey to give members of the public the opportunity to weigh in and give their, you know, aesthetic sensibility to the project. And I'm hoping that we can maybe kind of support your efforts in that in having a link on our website that links to the RTC survey and the videos to get more public input. And also, I will certainly relay this information to the Arts Commission, and whether they individually or maybe collectively may want to make some recommendations to, you know, the work that we're doing. So thank you very much for, you know, really bringing, beautifying, you know, the project, and I think it's going to be a wonderful edition. So with that, I think we will, there's no action to be taken on this item, so I will move us on to item 8B, which is the lifeguard services update. And this is, the recommended action is to approve a resolution amending the hourly seasonal salary schedule and modifying the city of Capitola Beach lifeguard junior job descriptions. This will authorize city managers to execute a side letter to the lifeguard services agreement with the city of Santa Cruz and increase the amount of the agreement to $110,119. And three, receive a report regarding seasonal staffing plans for the summer of 2022. Can we have a staff report to start us off?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm going to take a minute to share my screen and confirm that it's all... All right, so, Mr. Moderator, does everything look good and sound good on the public end?
Looks, hey, okay.
Thank you. All right, so, council members, the item before you this evening is a report on the Capitola lifeguard services. Now, this is an introduction for this item. Since the lifeguard services in Capitola are, involve several agencies, and there are several moving parts to it, I wanted to just frame this a little bit and bring your attention that the items that are requiring action this evening, there's, there's three of them. Adjustment to the hourly pay rate, additions to the job description for our beach lifeguard, junior lifeguard instructor position, as well as our contract with the city of Santa Cruz. So as I go further into the report, there's a lot of detail.
Um, so as I go further into the report, there's a lot of details kind of within the story, um, of this report. But just to kind of frame that, that a lot of these, all these proposed changes are, um, are presented to you to ensure a successful recruitment for this summer as well as, um, in hopes for creating a solid foundation for the retention and development of next summer. So a little bit of forward thinking. Um, so moving to our background. Uh, the lifeguard tower services in, on Capitola Beach have been provided by the city of Santa Cruz Fire Department um, since about two thousand and twelve. They, um, staff our, um, lifeguard towers and it's the current contract that we have is we entered into for a two-year term and that contract ends, is set to end, um, this September. Also, uh, the Central Fire District has been providing our junior lifeguard instructors, the staff that run our junior lifeguard program. Um, they have been providing training services and since two thousand and nineteen. And when we had entered into that agreement, an aspect of that was, um, for Central Fire to begin a lifeguard program in which they would, in lieu of the city of Santa Cruz, begin to provide lifeguard services on our beach. And that, uh, target that we had identified through our recent contract, um, was to begin in twenty twenty three. Um, also, uh, we just in, in December, in preparation for this, uh, annual, or like the planned state minimum wage increase, uh, council heard an item where the hourly pay schedules were adjusted in order to meet that minimum wage increase. Now, just recently, uh, it has come to the fact that neighboring jurisdictions have, have increased the, uh, their pay rates for beach lifeguards, junior lifeguard instructors, um, but that it is, is greater than what we had originally planned. And so in order to be competitive, um, staff is recommending to adjust, uh, the junior lifeguard, youth lifeguard positions. Um, this adjustment will cost an additional fifteen thousand dollars over an entire summer. And, um, I want to bring council's attention that there, in this body of the text in the staff report, there was an error and the appropriate dollar amount is fifteen thousand dollars, which is the correct dollar amount that was later in the report in the chart. Um, now, the city of Santa Cruz has, um, came to the, came to us requesting an increase to the contract in which they provide, uh, lifeguard services. Um, they had also experienced a hourly employee pay rate increase and the city of Santa Cruz provides the service to us, um, just at direct cost of staff. And so the, the request is to increase the contract by nineteen thousand dollars, which would total, um, for, for the entire service of, uh, starting from Memorial Day to Labor Day, um, a one hundred and one thousand, one hundred and nineteen. I didn't say that right. Uh, uh, so the, um, additionally, um, the city of Santa Cruz has also offered to provide leadership training for, um, our lifeguard staff and tower experience for our lifeguard staff as we, uh, prepare for future summers. Uh, this would be training that would be equivalent to training that their, uh, lifeguard lieutenant or beach lifeguard twos would, um, typically experience in their organization. Uh, Central Fire will also be participating, um, in this leadership training as well. Um, so Central Fire has, are, has been providing that training program for us and has also been in the process of developing a strategic plan, um, within their really merged agency. And therefore is unavailable, unable to identify a timeline in which they would be able to start a beach lifeguard program within their organization and provide tower services on Capitola Beach. Um, so in thinking about how we can move forward for the future, um, one of the, uh, recommendations is to adjust the beach lifeguard, junior lifeguard job description, um, enabling us to have a, a little bit more opportunity within that recruitment pool. Um, there are two changes that are being proposed. The first one is to change the age requirement for employment. Currently, the job description identifies the, as eighteen years of age or older. Um, now, the US LA is an organization that outlines, uh, lifeguard standards or training standards, um, for open water lifeguards. And they have identified that the minimum age for an open one, open water lifeguard is sixteen years of age. Um, and so what I would be requesting is that we modify our job description to identify that an individual can be seventeen years of age by July first for the applying year or sixteen years of age having received captain within our Capitola Junior Guard Program as well as a recommendation from the junior lifeguard coordinator. Um, a second change to the job description includes the duties of tower surveillance. Currently, our job description primarily describes, um, our beach lifeguard, junior lifeguard instructors as just junior lifeguard instructors. And this is adding the duties of beach and water surveillance, uh, for a primary predominantly safety oriented, um, perspective. So we would recommend adding that to our job description as well. Um, and finally, to again, position ourselves into a, uh, long-term plan for next summer as well as take full advantage of the city of Santa Cruz's offer, um, to provide additional leadership training and given tower experience, uh, staff is proposing an additional hire of an assistant coordinator as well as, um, three beach lifeguards. This would be approximately forty thousand dollars more, uh, of expense and wages over the entire summer. Now, the summer season, um, it exists within two budgets as, uh, part, the first part of it is then ending in June and then the next, um, when we begin in, for the next fiscal budget begins in July. So for the rest of this budget, our current budget that we are in, um, these increase in pay rates as well as the addition of four staff members increases or adds a total of twenty seven thousand dollars. Um, at this moment, staff is not recommending that, and a budget amendment as this, uh, projected cost is, can already be, um, covered under the planned expenses within the budget. Um, but over the long, over a full year cost for the program, the, the full year cost is seventy four thousand dollars. And the staff would be including those full year costs in the next budget proposal that council will be hearing, um, next month. So, um, the recommended action for this evening is to approve a resolution amending the hourly and seasonal salary schedule and modifying the city of Capitola beach lifeguard, junior lifeguard instructor job description and authorize the city manager to execute a first amendment to the lifeguard services agreement with the city of Santa Cruz increasing the amount of the agreement to one hundred and ten thousand and one hundred and nineteen. Um, and again, I want to draw council's attention that since the, um, release of, of the packet, there has been a change in language, um, for the amendments and that it is to execute a first amendment and not a side letter. Um, so with that, I will give a little question.
Good questions by councilmembers. Uh, so, yeah, councilmember Bertrand.
Thank you, mayor. Um, Nikki, you mentioned something about, um, the standard organization, Lifeguard Association, I believe, and the extra training that you're contemplating, including, um, ocean surveillance, et cetera, um, so we can develop our program. Can you comment a little bit about, uh, how we will stand in terms of, you know, standard practices like in comparison to what they do in Santa Cruz? I know an issue at one point was, was our comparison in terms of standards, in terms of safety, et cetera, uh, compared to other programs. I just want to get a better understanding of that since I'm new to this. Thank you.
Yes, um, thank you for the question. So the, since we have started partnering with, um, Central Fire, our staff, our junior lifeguard staff, um, have been trained under US LA standards. So they, um, which meet or exceed, uh, those expectations. Now, Central Fire is, has, has a field set in order to train us, but our partnership with the city of Santa Cruz, where they actually are operating, um, a lifeguard program and have done so respectfully on our beaches as well as their own beaches, um, they are bringing, providing to us this summer an opportunity for, um, a greater level of experience and training with the operation side of that kind of program. And so this summer, the plan would be that we would work alongside the city of Santa Cruz, taking advantage of the training opportunities that they would be providing to their own leadership staff and, um, having that be extended to us. And also that that our, um, would be able to get tower service experience so that we would have an opportunity to take this experience, hopefully retain that experience through, um, next summer and be, have, have a good foundation. And I also want to point out that Chief Odie is on, is, is anybody, um, should you want to direct any questions there as well.
Thank you. So my main concern is still to be able to provide good service and, um, so this training is going to elevate our level of expertise, I gather. Um, okay, um, so Santa Cruz running the program, I understand they provide a lot of equipment. Do we have that kind of equipment that, um, is used for water rescues and things like that? Or are we deficient in that? Would that require another investment?
Um, so the equipment that is used both by the city of Santa Cruz as well as our own junior lifeguard staff, that is all of Capitola's equipment. There, um, there are supplies that are, are used throughout the summer and, um, we have been in a relationship with the city of Santa Cruz where we would, they would bill, we would purchase. It's changed from year to year in order to make sure that the appropriate amount of supplies are there. And then in the event that there was something that, um, we needed, the city of Santa Cruz had communicated that to us in the past that this item of equipment, um, was needing to be replaced for however, you know, it worked out. So the, we do have quite a bit of equipment and, um, it is something that does need replacing. There's appreciation to that since we're in this. Uh, so every year we do an annual inspection of any equipment that might need to be replaced.
Thank you.
Any other councilmembers have questions? Um, seeing none, um, Nikki, I, I had a question, uh, about the long-term plan, uh, for, um, I guess adding to our available staff. And I wonder what, what is the turnover rate for, uh, the lifeguards and lifeguard training? And, you know, and how likely are they to be available to us within a year, two years down the line? Um, and, and in the event that Central Fire should maybe move forward, that they're planning to develop a program, uh, will this be, um, wasted money?
Um, but thank you for asking those questions. They're great questions. So, um, the, so the first one, I'll, I'll answer you back. Is that, no, this, um, this wouldn't be wasted money. Did whoever, whoever is ultimately starting this, um, lifeguard operation on our beach next summer, whether it be Central Fire, whether it be the city, whether it be Santa Cruz, um, it is, it is bringing a pool of staff that will have experience and be, and have an ability to be retained. And, um, and that's very valuable. Each year, it is typical that any, uh, any, that, any organization, summer hourly positions, you have about fifty percent retention. Um, some years are better, some years not. One of the challenges that we're working with is that the past two summers, we have been operating in a modified program due to COVID. And so we had a much smaller staffing pool. Um, and last summer, it was only about ten. And to, and this summer, we would be, our goal would be to hire about twenty seven individuals, twenty eight individuals. And so, um, we're already starting at a deficit, uh, with that retention. And so the idea here is, is just to get, get more individuals trained in our favor um, so that we would have a good foundation for next summer, whoever is ultimately going to hire.
Great, all right, thank you.
Um, seeing no other, uh, council questions, I'm going to take this out to the public and see if there's any members of the public that would like to, uh, comment on this item. Um, if you would please raise your hand. Uh, all the instructions are coming up on the screen now. Should be able to see them. Larry, do we have anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, sir. I do not see any attendees with their hands raised to this item and we have not received any.
Okay, I'll bring this, um, uh, item back to the council, uh, for further deliberation and, uh, possible motion. Uh, it is here again to receive it. It's, it would be a three-part motion. Um, and then I'll just open it after the special on councilmembers. Yeah, councilmember Bertrand. You, you're still on mute, councilmember.
There you go. My hand shakes, that's the problem. Um, yeah, I, you know, my, my sense that you're planning for the, the future is, um, you know, many scores, we have to expand the program and there's uncertainty. Who's going to provide the services, whether it's Central or Santa Cruz or, or South even. Um, so expanding our offerings in terms of training, um, you know, looking forward to the future. Um, thanks very much for doing that. Um, obviously all the support, the, the program in this day is so important to see in Capitola. Um, the issue of maintenance, excuse me, of turnover that Sam brought up. Um, I, I know that our program offers a lot for prospective people who want to be in the fire departments and you know what, there's great draws there. Is this still, you know, it's another question, but is this still sort of an off the current that you see? You know, that helps make this program successful because as you plan to go forward, is there something we could stress? Is that a helpful benefit then?
Um, yeah, I do, I do think that many individuals that come through our Yeah, I do, I do think that many individuals that come through our program are interested in entering fire or emergency response. I've known individuals that have gone into nursing through, through this experience as well. So, there is some of that, some of them are interested in, that they have, or they're here because they've had a passion for it, that they've grown up through the program and that really they just want to give back to the community as well. And so, you know, it's a little bit of, it's a little bit of both, but it's definitely that there, there is a dedication to our program and a hope for it to have a valuable experience no matter what.
Okay. I don't know if this is the right time to make a motion, but I'll wait for further comments.
I, I think this is an appropriate time to make the motion. We'll see if it's settled and we can have further discussions on the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So, I'll read from the agenda here. Item one is to approve a resolution amending the hourly and seasonal salary schedule and modifying the city of Capitola's beach lifeguard, junior lifeguard instructor job description. The second part of the motion would be to authorize the city manager to execute a first amendment to the lifeguard services agreement with the city of Santa Cruz and increase the amount of the agreement to one hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. That's my motion.
I can second that.
Oh, I see the, so the third, the third part of action, just to receive the report regarding the central plan?
I will amend the motion to include receiving the report, thank you very much.
Vice Mayor?
I can second that amendment if necessary, yeah, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further deliberations by council members? Seeing none, before I call for the vote, I did want to recognize and I think appreciate Nikki's efforts to, I think, maybe be prepared to be our own lifeguard program. You know, we've been fortunate enough, we should have Central Fire and have, you know, the city of Santa Cruz fill in for us. But, you know, as we look forward, it may be, I think, it's common enough to be self-sufficient and to start developing our own program, you know, just, and that, that just may be out of, in the sense of itself. I think that that, even though it's an investment, I think it's an important step toward that, you know, ultimate maybe eventualities. So, with that, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
One more question, excuse me, one more comment today?
Sure, go ahead, council member for Trent.
Yeah, I'd like to echo your comments about Nikki and her attention to the program. I, as I recall, this was one of the first things that was thrown on her lap when she got fired and she did exceptionally well there. And it's, you know, I really, again, this is so important to Capitola, so thank you very much for keeping this program going and the attention that you give to it so that it's successful each year. Thank you.
With that, I'll call for the vote.
Council member for Trent.
I agree.
Council member Brooks.
Aye.
Council member Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Aye.
Mayor Story.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Nikki. Now we'll move on to item eight D, which is the alignment of the proposed pedestrian pathway from the Upper Beach and Village Parking Lot to Monterey Avenue. There's a recommended action, which is to approve a new proposed route for the pedestrian pathway from the Upper Beach to the Village Parking Lot to Monterey Avenue. Steve, you going to lead us in this?
I am, leading you up again, I'm the sheriff's ranger. Does that look great, Mr. Moderator?
It looks great.
Thank you. So the item before you tonight is continuing to look at the proposed pathway that we have between Monterey Avenue and Upper Beach and Village Parking Lot. Been on the books for about six years now, keeps kind of changing as the project along the rail trail changes, so we finally come up with a new alignment, I think, well, move forward and that's pretty good. So, to give you some quick background, 2016, the city received a grant to construct this pathway from the RTC. It wasn't a defined pathway at that time. It was envisioned, we were in time to separate people walking up Monterey Avenue from the traffic. Right now, they're, they're forced to walk in the, in the roadway itself. People do it every day, especially crowded, always saying the summer and when we have nice weather. The initial plan was for us to traverse up the slope of the, of the rail trail, up the slope of the railroad property and actually tie in up on the grade, the rail grade and follow that up to Monterey Avenue. We drafted up plans, gone through review with the RTC, came up with a proposed plan, which then kind of hit some skids because the county started working on segments ten and eleven. Let me, oh, sorry, slipped a slide there. So, what we found in working in time to put this project on the rail trail itself or on the rail corridor, was that there's a lot of work involved in assessing potential pollutants, mitigating them. Councilmember, back in last March, we approved an agreement that said if there's pollutants in there that needs to be mitigated regardless of a pathway, that the RTC would take care of it. If there was pollutants that only needs to be mitigated because of the pathway, then it's been our responsibility as part of our project. The county, which is working on segments ten and eleven, which do go through Capitola, was trying to do this on a more global scale. We were hoping to piggyback along with them, that they were completing these environmental reviews and mitigation measures. They're also looking, they're still looking at how the pathway is going to align in relation to, if there's going to be rails, if there's not going to be rails, you all know all those issues, and probably better than I do, but they're, they're still designing and doing the environmental studies and we're still, we're still several years away. And rather than wait for them to complete that work, we sat down with them and talked about proposing a new alignment for just our segment, our little pathway, if we will, that's supposed to tie the parking lot and whatever goes on in the corridor, the rail corridor eventually. We came up with the idea of essentially building a sidewalk along the existing road. The advantage of this, of new alignment, is that it is predominantly outside the rail corridor, rail property, it's not any area of expected pollutants and I'm very confident that we would not have to do any mitigation along those lines. It reduces the amount of retaining walls, when it's that slope, we're going to have some extensive retaining walls to do. And it ties in cleanly with the crosswalk at Monterey Avenue to the east side. On the east side, part of the project always included time to trying to dress that up. It went from just doing simple landscaping to tying it into a trail at that point and come back and forth as we worked with the RTC. At this time, we had proposed that and going back to our original plan, which was to put some curb and gutter in there, trying to keep cars from going up there and parking, and then also doing some landscaping up there. Very simple, if the use of that property changes in the future from RTC's use, owning of that property, it wouldn't be a big loss to change what we've put in there, but it would dress up that corner and stop it from being a parking lot at certain times. So, this is a pretty broad overview of the, the proposed line. So here, the orange line here was the original one, it was going to go along the base of the road and then cut up to the rail level and then go to Monterey Avenue, tie into the here and go across the street. What we're proposing now is obviously just following in the curb line. They have two dash lines, because there's two oak trees here, or have not done any studies about how to, you know, try and minimize the impact on those. So we found two options are each side of the oak tree, let's still go across and here you can see the little, small improvements that we're proposing on that side. I have some pictures here, that'll give you a better idea. You can see, we would put a curb ramp here, giving access to scrollers, wagons, wheelchairs, everybody to get on this sidewalk and go out and they would be separated from the vehicles going through here. Looking at from the other direction, the same thing in here, to kind of just run into this tree and we, we need to figure this out. Obviously, the impact on the oak trees here is significant. I don't think we'd have to remove them, but I've got some pictures here that show. So the first thing is, one of the trees that we've always identified was going to be a problem, is this giant cypress tree that has been there. Unfortunately for the tree, made good for the project was it suffered significant damage about two months ago and a large branch fell and put a large scar into the trunk itself. We consulted Arbus and they did say it needed to be, it was going to be significantly weakened where that branch came off and they recommended a removal and I believe it was removed only about two weeks ago at this point. So, removes a significant hurdle, to be honest with you. Looking at the other way, so the cypress stump is way down here, you can see I've numbered the oak trees that are along the way, and I have another picture that shows them all better coming up. So, but there are six oak trees here that will potentially be impacted. If we had gone the original route, there was six to eight oak trees that were going to be impacted that were, and some are the same trees. So we're hopefully reducing the impact on the oats, but it's not still significant. So here's another picture of the oak trees. The cypress tree is just off the picture here, where we orient you. So these two trees, if we had started the pathway going up, these two trees would have been removed on the pathway going up through the rail corridor. I'd say sit now, we're not certain whether we can build a sidewalk here, we are trying to look at whether we can move this curb line out away from the trees, give us more room, we get space around the oak trees, but this is what needs to be looked at as we move forward. Under the old alignment, these trees were going to have to be removed because we are meeting ADA of five percent, it was a very gradual slope and it just kind of just ran up here. This oak tree was most likely impacted and those trees will not be impacted with what we're going forward with now. These next two trees, I think are far enough away, but only time will tell if we move forward with the design, whether we can save these two. And then I'm going to go back one slide, this pit, this tree number one, and there's the tree hidden behind it, you can see these branches right here, are going to be the toughest ones. If they weren't there, it'd be very clean just to run up here and tie into this curb ramp here and we'd have continued sidewalks here. If we go around them, we are starting to encroach back onto the RTC's property, the rail corridor property as we back away and go behind these trees. So, one of the thoughts is, we do a bolt out here and I don't know if we have enough width here, you know, we, we need to lay that out. But savings, these trees are, we're either going to have to be going behind them and probably digging on top of the roots or potentially removing them. I just want to be kind of, it's a, it's a difficult project to get in there. But we do think it's worthwhile realigning that pathway, there's less impact on the trees, there's reduced savings in the project cost that we will not be having mitigation and the gluten chemical concerns that we do if we work up on the rail corridor itself. Both the county and the RTC who are kind of taking the lead on ten and eleven, segments ten and eleven have reviewed this and they concur that this realignment makes sense, it provides the necessary link to whatever project they came up with, but it doesn't hamstring them at all if they move forward with their design. So our recommended action that's made is to approve the proposed route, the new proposed route, pedestrian pathways from the Upper Beach and Village Parking Lot to Monterey Avenue. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council member Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor, Story. Steve, are there, is there an expiration of this funding that we're trying to utilize?
It's RTC money and I do not own there's an expiration date at this time.
And is it specific to the use of this particular project that we have to utilize this RTC funding?
It was awarded for a connection to a rail trail, if we will, and the parking lot. It's a possibility we could shift it to another project or similar, similar thing, but it was granted for this project.
And then for clarification for the, the recommended act, action, by moving forward today, is this, is, will this come back with the plan and then we would vote on the actual plan at a later time? I'm just concerned about the trees and not really having a good gauge of it.
So there's, there's two options you could take. One recommended action that would be just to tell us to proceed, we would kind of go through the design process and come back to you when we're ready to take the project up a bit. An alternate would be to ask us to do some preliminary design and impact on the trees and come back at that stage, which would be before we would ask for a project approval.
Thank you, Steve, that's all my questions.
Any other, yeah, council member for Trent. You're on mute, council member.
Try and be good and stay off of mute. Okay. Yeah, you mentioned segments ten and eleven and the design process, this is nowhere complete and certainly hasn't gone through RTC and do you have any sense of our necessity to break the plan forward at this point in reference to what's being, you know, I think Matt's involved in this, not Machado, so do you have any sense of timelines here? Because, you know, basically I need to see waste a lot of effort and this is such a movable thing on RTC's side.
I think what, what we're after is trying to improve the safety of people walking up from the parking lot up to Monterey Avenue and back. We know it's a major pedestrian corridor, everybody parks at that end of the parking lot and stick up there. We're trying to get that built and not wait for all these other decisions that need to be made by the county, the RTC and everybody else to figure out how best to file it in. I think this project gives us the ability to provide that safety measure now, in the near future and not wait, and then once they, once those plans become finalized, we can still build connections to the rail corridor if they're needed that would spur confidence. I don't see that that changes a whole lot, but it, this, this gives us the opportunity to build something while they're going through their process.
The other question is, we're putting a sidewalk in, is this going to narrow the pathway sufficient, excuse me, the driveway sufficiently that we're going to parking? Where is it wiped out, this one?
So that's one of the things we need to study, that, you know, especially around the, some of the oats, can we push it out, maintain lanes of travel that are safe without creating problems between the cars? We need about ten feet, truly close in some of the areas, whether we can push the curb out six inches and gain that six inches separation from the oak trees. But that's part of the preliminary design work that will be done.
Okay, yeah, because, you know, if we could save the trees and maybe lose a parking spot or have the orientation of the parking a little bit differently, we might be able to accomplish what you're talking about, save the trees and also provide the safety, which I, I think, you know, I completely agree, that's a paramount issue. Thank you.
Any other questions on the report? If not, I'll take it to members of the public and see if any attendee would like to comment on this item. If so, please raise your hand or you can dial in or you can send an email. Larry, could you put up the, there we go. Larry, could you put up the, there we go.
Can you see that okay?
No.
Hang on, why is it black on my screen? Something happened to it, so let me make sure the other side, I don't think it's a...
So, let me just...
How about that, a little bit?
There we go, yes. So, yeah, have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Sir, I do not see any attendees with their hands raised, I do not have any.
Okay, I'll then bring this back to the council for further deliberation and action. Who would like to begin? I see councilmember Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor Story. I'd like to make a motion to request staff to return with a preliminary design for the pedestrian passway from the Upper Beach and Village Parking Lot to Monterey Avenue, with showing the least amount of effect on the trees in that area.
I'll second that, and if I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead, councilmember.
Yeah, the sentiment that councilwoman Brooks is talking to is, I think, very critical, you know, when I walk up that trail, and I've been walking up that trail for good twenty-plus years, those oats are really wonderful, and I like the canopy of them, the sort of a, I've been in several places like that, and I wished I could see, you know, the overarching of oats that make it such a wonderful place to walk. But you're right, we have to make this safe. I haven't heard of any complaints, but, you know, it is an issue that could come up, and so we have to address it. And if you could come up with other ways with protected trees, and, you know, if we possibly have to sacrifice some of the parking arrangements just to do that, I would welcome to see a design to do that, and so that's why I'm seconding it, and I think councilwoman Brooks completely got the sense of our discussion and concerns.
Did you tell me when you were sorry the sound got kind of jumbled?
Oh, it did, exactly, it's dark all the time. I guess I did tell you, councilmember.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to confirm, I want to make sure I understand, I'm looking at the staff report, and it says that the, the impact on the oak trees on the new route, the one that we're considering, is less than the original route that we already voted on. So, if we hadn't had to bring this back, there, we would have, we had already determined that we would be losing those trees, or could potentially lose those trees already, is that correct?
Yes, there's certainly more trees that absolutely would have had to been removed on the tree on the, you know, current route than on the proposed route. Kind of in the unknown land right now, whether we can save enough of the oats going on the new route.
Okay, and then however many we potentially might have to take out, we'll have to replant, correct?
Absolutely, we would do. Now, probably using Arbus' recommendation on how best to plant new oak trees in that area, and I won't say a number, two to one is our requirement, but if three to one works, or if it's a one and a half, or one or whatever, we would follow that recommendation to try and reestablish that canopy in there.
Okay, great, no, I'm glad to hear that. Okay, I will, I will be supporting this motion if we move forward. Thank you.
Okay. With the, councilmember Kaiser, would you want to weigh in?
Thank you, yeah, I am, I'm pretty much on board with what everybody else is saying. Definitely want to minimize, you know, involving too much tear down of any of the oats, and I do think that this is a priority as far as pedestrian access and pedestrian safety, and keeping it on that side of the lot, which is closest to the, the train tracks and the stop at Monterey, I think that's important rather than involving the other side of the entryway of the parking lot. So, I, I want to see this move forward, however we can make it work the best for what we have on our plate. I understand that it's a difficult sort of roundabout way, so I'm looking forward to moving this forward, and if we can come back to it once more information is, is figured out based on the trees, and whatever we need to do to keep it just safe and environmentally sound is, is right up our alley, I think. So, Steve, thank you so much for all the work, and, and I'm looking forward to making this more of like, just, I think it visually to look visually cool and more open and accessible to everybody, so it's awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Brooks, did you have your hand up again?
I just wanted to add that, Steve, I'm sure this is something that you do already, and I know there's a person second, it's just additional comments for myself here, that I believe the trees act almost as a sound wall for the neighbors, for the houses there. I lived in that place for 10 years, so I know personally, and so that's also one of my biggest concerns about the impact on the neighbors, and the visual aesthetics for them that they've lived, they've had there for, you know, sixty, seventy years since owning those, those properties there. So, I just, I know that we have to replant, and that's a piece, an element of it, but I, I think that it's really important to understand it does impact more than just that. And to councilmember Bertrand's point, you know, everyone's walked that, and I think we've kind of had our own anecdotal observations of the, gosh, it's really annoying not to have a sidewalk, but that's just kind of been our presumption, I don't know that we've had any real issues, or other than our own internal complaints of not having a sidewalk. So, moving this project forward, I get it's, it's the goodest thing to do, but I, to agree with councilmember Bertrand, I, I agree that there hasn't really, I haven't seen or heard to counsel that there's really been an issue here that we're, we're really dealing with, that's been brought to a council's attention. So, those are just my comments, I appreciate the thoughts from other councilmembers, thank you.
Vice Mayor Kaiser, do you have further comments?
Yeah, thank you, and I think, I think you bring up a really good point about it not being this direct issue being brought to counsel, but I, I think we all have the luxury of being able to walk through there, but a lot of people don't, and they're parking there, and then bringing their family and kids and dogs to the beach, or wherever, which can be chaotic, or like very spread out, you know? I know I don't always have my things together when I'm doing that kind of stuff, so I think it's not necessarily the issue of complaint, or people bringing this to our attention, but it's actually something that we might be able to get ahead of in case something weird happens. And like, I think it's maybe just the, it, it may seem low on the totem pole, but I think in the long run, it could benefit in a way that we're not even really sure of yet at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Bertrand, do you have further comments?
Yeah, I do, it's a little off the subject, but it's, it sort of begs the question, I think we need a sidewalk on the lower end too, you know, that leads to Capitol Avenue, and, you know, the people take their wagons down that just as much as they do going up, and I think more people do that in terms of, you know, going down. Some people walk up, but when they have the wagons, they rarely take it up, that's my observation, and those cars come through there fairly fast sometimes, in the wrong direction, which is not expected. So, maybe we need a sidewalk on the other side going down to Capitol Avenue, in terms of safety, just to put that out there.
With that, before I talk for the vote, I'm just going to, yeah, Steve, do everything you can to save the trees, and so, and then let's look at the design when it comes back to us. Thank you. So, with that, I'll call for a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mayor Story. I, I wanted to clarify, because the motion is different than the recommended action, that the motion is to request staff to return with a preliminary design for the project, showing the least amount of impact on the trees in the area, and I will call for the vote, councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Brooks.
You like it, man?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Aye.
Mayor Story.
Aye. And the motion passes to unanimous, please. Thank you, Steve. So, now we'll move on to item eight D, which is to consider a letter in support for California Senate Bill eight forty-three regarding renters tax credit. The recommended, recommended action is to direct the mayor to sign a letter in support of Senate Bill eight forty-three, which would increase California renters' tax credit. Can we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Story. Moderator, does everything look okay?
Looks great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, council and Mayor Story. As the mayor said, this is a quick report based on a request from council previously on California Senate Bill eight forty-three. So, the background on this bill is that it would increase the renters' tax credit for primarily low-income California renters. If the bill were to move forward and to pass, single households making around forty-three thousand dollars or less annually would receive a five-hundred-dollar credit, and joint filers making together about eighty-seven thousand dollars a year would receive a thousand dollars in credit. Something I think that is notable is that single parents would receive the same as joint filers, not single households, under the new bill. And just in comparison, currently, the offset is now sixty dollars for single filers and a hundred and twenty dollars for joint filers. So, this is the first time the tax credit for renting would be raised since nineteen seventy-nine, and is intended to kind of acknowledge inflation among other, other things that have changed with the times. And it is a very well-supported bill, more than forty California legislators, including our state senator John Laird, who is a co-author of the bill, very much bipartisan-supported bill as well. Just something to think about locally, our senate district currently, almost forty percent of residents are renters. Here in Santa Cruz County, more than forty percent, forty-point-seven percent are renters. Based in twenty nineteen, I think that number has likely gone up since then, and in Capitola, forty-six percent of lived-in housing units are occupied by renters, and the monthly, average monthly rent in Capitola is more than two thousand dollars. So, the recommended action this evening is to direct the mayor to sign a letter in support of California Senate Bill eight forty-three, a draft of which was included in the packet, and, you know, if that is to be what council desires, the letter would then be mailed to the author of the bill, Stephen Glazer. Thank you. I'm available for any questions.
Councilmembers, have questions? Seeing none, I'm going to ask if members of the public would like to comment on this item. So, you should see instructions to raise your hand, like I'll star nine, or send us an email. Larry, seeing anything?
First story, I do not see any attendees with their hands raised to talk on this item, and we do not have any emails.
Okay, with that, I'm going to bring it back to council for further deliberation and, and action. Some way to like to make a motion? Yes, councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, I moved that we support this bill and send a letter to the author with an amendment, and we also send it to our representative Laird, since he's in our area.
Is there a second to the motion? Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, I'll, I'll second that, and if I could make a friendly amendment or addition, if we could also have this sent to the committee on, I believe it's the committee on budget and fiscal review, I think is where it's going to be going, so that the, so that the committee members who will be, you know, considering this bill will, will see it, and not just the author who's, who's actually presenting it.
I think that's a good point, so this, basically it's still in committee, and so they have, have to come out of committee first, so, yeah, I'll accept that, thank you.
Well, thank you, in that case, I second.
Yeah.
The amendment, yeah.
Thank you. Just to clarify, was there a request that the budget and fiscal review committee and Assembly member Laird be CC'd on the letter?
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah, that's the idea, right?
To get classified for number. Are there any other councilmembers that have commented on the motion before? Seeing none, I think before I talk for a vote, I guess I'd say I can't believe that this hasn't been increased since nineteen seventy-nine, and so it seems like something that's been well over the... So, with that, I'll call for a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mayor Story. So, to clarify, you're directing the mayor to sign the letter, which will then be sent to the committee on budget and fiscal review, as well as CC-ing Senator Laird and Senator Glazer. Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kaiser.
Aye.
Mayor Story.
Aye.
Thank you.
And the motion passes to unanimous, thank you. And with that, that brings us to item nine, which is adjournment. So, I will adjourn this, this meeting until our next regularly scheduled meeting on February the twenty-fourth at seventeen. With that, thank you, everyone, thank you, staff, and everyone be kind to yourself and to each other, and good night, Capitola.
Thank you.
Good night.
Goodbye.